Good afternoon, everyone. Normally, we have an invocation and we do not have a member of our faith-based community here with us, although I do see Peter here presently. If you'd like to do an impromptu invocation, otherwise, we can do a moment of silence. Okay. Oh, Peter, all right. Well, we can't pass that up. Well, normally, an invocation is a non-denominational prayer prior to commencing our proceedings for the day, so we keep it to under two minutes. You're welcome to do less than that if you prefer, and you can pray at the podium. Right there, it's all mic'd up. Surprise.
This is what happens, Pastor, when you show up to meetings.
We put you to work.
All right, well, let's pray. Dear Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for life. We thank you for all the amazing, wonderful things that you have gifted us with today and all the days before this, Lord. This time, we're here to make plans, Lord, we're here to make things better. And so, I pray for your guidance. I pray for your presence. I pray that you would be honored and that your will would be done and your kingdom come through all that's done today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor. So, at this time, I will call the meeting to order and ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Ingalls, do we have certification of today's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. My office has reviewed all items on today's agenda, and they all meet legal approval.
Thank you, Mr. Ingalls. Do any commissioners have disclosures for items on today's agenda?
I have none, thank you.
No, sir.
And I have none either. And with that, I would like to ask Marcia Alston to come up for the La Liga photo collage presentation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Marcia Alston with the Douglas County Youth Initiative. Thank you for having us today. Just real briefly, five years ago, we started a program with the Youth Initiative called La Liga. It is a free soccer/football program for 6th through 12th graders. What we saw several years ago was an uptick in people, children, who were getting involved in the legal system. What we wanted to do was we wanted to give them an activity, so we created La Liga. My partner in crime is Pastor Peter Rodriguez, right over my shoulder. He and I met for coffee, and La Liga was born over a cappuccino and a latte. So, we are starting our fifth year. Wednesday, we had our first game for this season, and we had about 60 kids play. Not only do the kids come, but the parents come, the grandchildren come, aunts and uncles. It's a lot of fun. So, the very nice folks at La Liga made a photo collage that they would like to present to the commissioners as this was a program that was funded and started by Douglas County Commissioners. I would like to now introduce Oscar. Oh, again. I was practicing outside, it obviously did not work. So, Oscar, come on up. Oscar has played with us, and I'd like for him to say a few words, if you don't mind, Oscar.
Hi, Oscar, welcome.
Hi, Oscar, welcome. Thank you for having me here today. So, I began when Peter told my mom I was a freshman in high school, eighth grader, nothing to do, and then I was still lazy. Come play soccer, didn't really want to, and ended up coming back every year. And now, fourth, almost fifth year in, I'm too old to play, so now I'm coaching the guys, having fun with that. And I'm just grateful to have that opportunity to actually not just keep me out of trouble, just keep me doing something active and moving around.
Oscar, thank you very much for that. And I don't know if, Marcia, did you have anyone else? Did Peter want to speak additionally? I know we already put him to task at the beginning of the meeting.
I would appreciate if Peter shared.
Absolutely, we would as well.
And then after, maybe a photo.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you for the opportunity again. We just want to make a difference, and we want to build bridges and open doors for those who may not have those opportunities. We've been able to do it through soccer. We're always looking for new ways of doing it, and we thank you for your support. Without the space, without the financial support, everything is volunteer-based, everything is by donation, and so, thank you so much for your commitment to this project and to making a difference in the community.
Well, thank you, Pastor, and you're welcome to come and pray before our meetings anytime. Any comments or questions from the Board of County Commissioners?
Thank you for what you do for kids. Anybody who has ever heard me talk up here about kids, Ruby, knows that when I start talking about kids, I get emotional and my voice quivers because kids are our future. And for everything you do to give our kids opportunity and hope, thank you so much.
You know what I mean? I've been a Boy Scout leader. I've helped out with my son's athletic teams in the past, and so, I mean, and my daughters, actually, too. And so, I think, you know, anything we can do for mentoring, coaching, young people in our community, the most important thing is finding that option that fits. Finding that option that fits for them and brings out, you know, the person that they eventually want to be and the person we can all be proud of. So, my hat's off to you, Pastor. You're doing God's work, whether you're praying or it's teaching kids how to kick a soccer ball around and organize and work as a team. And so, yeah, keep up the good work. I do believe we all depend on you and count on you to do that.
Thank you.
Well, I'm just incredibly honored to be here before you, Peter, and Oscar, and Marcia. I'm in my fourth year as county commissioner, and I think one of my first official opportunities in public was to go to La Liga, and Marcia said, "Well, show up in your gear, we're going to play some soccer." And I did, and got to really learn about the power of Marcia Alston and good ideas and getting together with you, Peter, and the faith-based community. That's really true. Over a cup of coffee, Marcia, as she normally does, had a really good idea. And we often say in Douglas County, we don't wait to do great. This La Liga program has been a runaway success, and it's incredible, Oscar, to see a product of this phenomenal program. And then, now, you're sending the elevator back down, you're coming back to coach, and so, hopefully, we'll have several more Oscars coming through that program. But I really believe La Liga inherits the definition of Douglas County Youth Initiative. This is a youth initiative. So, thank you for being here. We're honored to hear the presentation, and I think with that, we will go down for a photo.
This way.
Yeah. Be ready for that, sure. On three, one, two. All right, on three, one, two, three. All right, on three, one, two, three. All right, on three, one, two, three.
Maybe you want to do a cool kick, or maybe you're not. There you go.
Listen, everybody else is like trying to get to this side. I've got to need this side or else I don't need a picture.
All right, I'm going to say bowl, so I've learned to love soccer now, so thank you so much, Commissioner. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Cool. That's yours.
You can be here. Well, I'm honored. Cool. That is very special. We'll provide that to the county for display here. With that, we'll move on to item two on our agenda, which is citizen comments, organization comments. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than what is scheduled on today's regular agenda. You will be prompted to comment on those items at the appropriate time. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. Please state your name and address prior to making comments, and you will have up to three minutes to make those comments. Commissioner's comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. So, with that, are there any comments in the room? Any citizen comments? Okay, seeing none. Troy, do we have any comments online?
Yes, sir. I do have a comment from Bradley Treed. Bradley, I'm going to mute you, unmute you. Go ahead.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Bradley Treed, and I live at 6497 Mountain Manor Court in Parker. I have to officially say today will probably be my last final meeting I'm attending from living in Douglas County as my new home is out of state. I want to thank each of you for the work that you've done to make this county one of the best places that I've lived in for several years of my life. I also thank you for your occasional entertainment. A few of you squabble at each other. It is, is if I'm watching those reruns on Sundance of our gang, perhaps there's a little bit of Spanky Butch and Shirley in this board. Regardless, thank you for protecting my rights and making Douglas County a great place to reside. I have one more request for each of you. I think that as you continue to do the hard work, reach out to the different areas and employees of Douglas County for information. The staff and teams work hard to provide the information that each of you need. Therefore, I ask, when considering the previous talked-about compensation increase for the wages of these amazing workers in Douglas County government and thinking about doing this after the election, I think this needs to take place before the election. From the DMV to your facilities management and everyone else, there are a lot of hard-working people who deserve a little more. With gas prices high, inflation, groceries high, and other increased costs, please consider these employees and your teams. Reach down into your hearts and make this happen. If you can scrounge up money for Lockheed Martin, you can scrounge up money for the amazing, hard-working government employees of Douglas County. Do not wait until after the election. Just remember in Proverbs, Chapter 3, Verse 27, "Don't withhold good from someone who deserves it when it is in your power to do so." Commissioners, thank you.
Mr. Treed, thank you for your comments. We'll certainly appreciate you and your active engagement in Douglas County. Any additional comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no additional online comment.
Okay. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and open it up to the board for any additional Commissioner's comments.
No comment.
Mr. Treed, thank you for calling in. When, just for the record, when Laura Leary met with the board on April 18th and recommended a 3% across-the-board increase raise for all the employees, I supported that request. We were, she told us we are losing 18% of our employees over the year, which, if you have a workforce of five, that's one person that's leaving. So, the other four are doing the work of that fifth person, as well as training them when they come on board. So, we will continue to work on this. We've asked the Human Resources Director, Laura Leary, to come speak with us next week, and hopefully, we can do something to help our hard-working employees. Thank you.
And Mr. Treed, and to all that are thinking about this issue, I just want to reassure you that the Board of County Commissioners are in active conversation around the economic issues and inflationary pressures that we are seeing everywhere in the county, though we always want to be not the ones to pay ourselves first. We recognize that the staff that work here on behalf of the county are incredibly good people, doing very good work on a lean and mean budget. This county is out of debt. As of this year, we have a balanced budget and have been fiscally responsible, returning $10 million back to the citizens of Douglas County through a 1.25 mil levy reduction. And that in large part is due to the hard work of Doug de Board, our county manager, and many staff that work together well, as well as my predecessors on the Board of County Commissioners. So, we are thankful for that fiscal stewardship and want to ensure that those that are working hard and laboring on behalf of our citizens are compensated accordingly and appropriately. So, it may be more than that amount of adjustment that was recommended by Laura Leary, and we appreciate her input. That conversation is in active dialogue as we speak, so thank you for that. With that, I will close item number two in Commissioner's comments and move to the consent agenda. I will identify that item I from the consent agenda was requested to be removed for discussion, and it will be removed so that we can talk about that item. But I will entertain any motion or discussion on the consent agenda. And actually, before I do, let me ask if there is any citizen comment on any item in the consent agenda. Is there any citizen comment on the consent agenda? Troy, do we have any online?
Thank you, Commissioner. No online comment.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're capturing citizen comment on our consent as well. With that, I'll open it up for any further discussion and/or a motion from our board.
I have a motion to approve the requests in all items A through H and J through W of the consent agenda. Item I has been removed for discussion.
Second.
So, there's a first and second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Aye, and that motion carries. With that, we'll move to item 4A on our regular agenda. And that item is a resolution proclaiming May 2022 as Older Americans Month in Douglas County. Allison Cutting from Community Development. Hi, Allison.
Hello. Are we going to talk about that?
Oh, and I'm sorry. Before we, since we did, Allison, I hate to interrupt you, because we did remove I from the consent agenda, let's go ahead and move that up before item 4A so that we have an opportunity to discuss. So, just to identify that for the record, that's the license agreement with Gary and Vanessa Yost at 2363 Chesapeake Lane in Highlands Ranch to keep their fencing within the public right-of-way, Douglas County Project Number DV 2022-234. Chuck Smith from Engineering. Hi, Chuck.
So, the license agreement for you is Mr. Yost has installed the new fence that's within the public right-of-way. We have evaluated, the staff has evaluated, and operations have evaluated it as far as if there's any safety issues with that, and we have found none. So, we brought the license agreement for, to be approved.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
I would just like to clarify. We've had other issues come before us where someone bought a house, and the previous owner had built a building or did something that caused a commotion. Is this a situation, or did the Yosts build the fence themselves and create this problem for themselves?
Yes, Commissioner. The Yosts have built the new fence. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions from the Board of Staff?
None here.
And I have none. With that, I will accept a motion or any further discussion from the board on item I.
Would there be any citizen?
Oh, I'm sorry. Citizen comment on item I as well. Is there? I thought we didn't hear any citizen comment on consent agenda items, but since we pulled this, I'll ask again. Is there any citizen comment in the room or online on this item I?
I have no online comment.
Okay. So, I'll close public comment on this item I that was pulled from the consent agenda and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
So, I would just like to talk about this, that these owners moved the fence, as I understand, at seven feet past their property line into county right-of-way. And if every, if every citizen did that, we would have a problem, and I have a concern of approving something for one that can't be approved for all. That's why I ask this to be pulled for some discussion.
Further discussion from the board?
Generally speaking, I mean, I've had a little bit of experience with this in the past, and I guess it always comes down to what is the ramification? And so, I appreciate staff for conducting their investigation to determine if we have any public safety concerns or any concerns of any kind. At the same token, I do definitely appreciate the concern articulated by Commissioner Thomas. But in instances like this, when there is no harm, and, you know, it's the right-of-way, it is common property, and yet, we do have a picture in the packet, it does not look to be an eyesore, we don't have any public safety concerns, something like this, you know, I'm actually pretty lenient. I do appreciate us taking the step to do a license agreement so that if indeed we do have a pressing public, an item of public concern, that we do need to press, indeed, that fence can be moved and the appropriate boundary lines maintained. In the meantime, I mean, I'm prepared for a motion, but I defer to the chair for comments.
Well, I would agree, Commissioner Teal, and it's always good for the board to have discussion around items from consent that give us pause. I'm glad we had the opportunity to speak to it. I tend to agree that since a license is not a property interest and do-no-harm would occur as a result of accepting this, I believe that it meets the criteria, and I'm prepared to vote in favor.
Barring any further comments by the board, and if it pleases the board, I make a motion to approve a license agreement with Gary and Vanessa Yost at 2363 Chesapeake Lane in Highlands Ranch to keep their fencing within the public right-of-way, Douglas County Project Number DV 2022-234.
Second.
There's a first and second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. With that, we will return.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Is it possible that I vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard you say aye. So, let's go back and vote again. So, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No. So, that motion passes two to one, and item I will pass. So, with that, we'll move to item 4A on the regular agenda. And once again, this is the resolution proclaiming May 2022 as Older Americans Month in Douglas County. Allison Cutting from Staff. Hello again, Allison.
Thank you. So, Allison Cutting, Grants Administrator for Community Services, representing staff. The request before you today is the approval of a resolution proclaiming May 2022 as Older Americans Month in Douglas County to raise awareness about the many ways that older adults can remain in and be involved with our community. Across the nation, May is recognized as Older Americans Month. This year's theme is Age My Way. Douglas County can pursue an even better community for our older adults by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, encourage older adults to remain active and connected in our community, providing access and services that support aging in place. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners proclaim May 2022 as Older Americans Month in Douglas County. And I would like to recognize a few of our partners who are here today. We have members of the Seniors Council of Douglas County Executive Committee, and we have a few of our local area providers who provide services for residents in Douglas County. We have Aging Resources of Douglas County and Castle Rock Senior Activity Center. And I know Tiffany Curtin, who is our Education Chair from the Seniors Council, if you'd like to come up and say a few things.
Hi. If you want to just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tiffany Curtin. My address is actually in Colorado Springs, 1424 Territory Trail. I also work for Douglas County Libraries and am the Education Chair for the Seniors Council. I came today to express on behalf of the entire Seniors Council, our Executive Committee, and the people who attend our meetings, our gratitude to the Commissioners for allowing us to stay connected over these last two years, to be able to consistently host our meetings that keep our seniors in our county connected and engaged and allows them to be aware of new innovative programs and that are relevant to them in our county. I also wanted to express that we are very much looking forward to returning to in-person meetings for these that we held on the second, the first Thursday of every month at various locations now that we're going live and in person, and we want to encourage anybody to attend who is interested in learning more about innovation and other ways of connecting within our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Curtin. I believe one of our Commissioners is going to read the resolution for today. Commissioner Teal, are you prepared to do that?
Why? Because I have the most gray in my beard?
I think we're all getting up there.
It is my pleasure and honor. The Board of Douglas County Commissioners, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, and this is a resolution proclaiming May 2022 as Older Americans Month. Whereas Douglas County has one of the fastest-growing older adult populations in the country, with the population age 60 and over, expected to be 25% by 2030. And whereas, Douglas County includes a community of older adults who contribute to their strength, wisdom, and experience to Douglas County. And whereas, Douglas County recognizes that the community benefits when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcomed, included, and supported. And whereas, Douglas County recognizes the need to foster a community that provides the services and supports older Americans' need to thrive and age with dignity. And whereas, Douglas County can pursue an even better community for our older adults by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, encouraging older adults to remain active and connected to their community, providing access to services that support aging in place. Be it resolved, that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, State of Colorado, hereby proclaim that the month of May 2022 shall be commemorated as Older Americans Month. We celebrate their achievements and join efforts to support older Americans' choices about how they age in our community. So, read this 24th day of May 2022 in Castle Rock, Douglas County, Colorado.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Any other comments or questions from the Board of County Commissioners for staff or regarding this resolution?
Thank you for bringing this forward. Any of us who have been involved in our community at all have recognized the great experience and wisdom that older people bring to all of our boards, our commissions. They pay attention to what's going on in our community, and they bring so much. So, thank you for everything, those who support the older adults in our community. Thank you for what you do, and let's just remember that their wisdom has been gained over a lifetime. Thank you.
Well, I would echo our gratitude for bringing this forward, and no doubt, our senior population in Douglas County is bright, active, engaged. We often hear from them and welcome their input. Years of knowledge and expertise have been gleaned from their working years and what they experience today, and I know a lot of our policies reflect an interest in ensuring that our seniors are well-cared-for in our community. And those discussions continue, so I'm really looking forward to further conversations around how we can improve the lives of our older adults. With that, I will open it up for any citizen comment on this item. Is there any citizen comment, either in the room or online, regarding this item 4A?
and wisdom that older people bring to all of our boards, our commissions. They pay attention to what's going on in our community, and they bring so much. So thank you for everything, those who support the older adults in our community. Thank you for what you do, and let's just remember that their wisdom has been gained over a lifetime. Thank you.
Well, I would echo our gratitude for bringing this forward, and no doubt, our senior population in Douglas County is bright, active, engaged. We often hear from them and welcome their input. Years of knowledge and expertise have been gleaned from their working years and what they experienced today, and I know a lot of our policies reflect an interest in ensuring that our seniors are well-cared-for in our community. And those discussions continue, so I'm really looking forward to further conversations around how we can improve the lives of our older adults. With that, I will open it up for any citizen comment on this item. Is there any citizen comment either in the room or online regarding this item 4A?
This is Troy. I have no online comment.
Okay, and with that, I'll close citizen comment on this item 4A and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Well, if it pleases the Board, I do have a motion to approve a resolution proclaiming May 2022 as Older Americans Month in Douglas County.
Second.
We have a first and second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Thank you, Allison. With that, we'll move on to item 4B, which is a resolution adopting the Douglas County Debris Management Plan 2022 update. Dan Roberts, the Assistant Director of Operations, presenting for Staff. Hi, Dan.
Good afternoon. My name is Dan Roberts. I'm Assistant Director of Operations for Public Works, here to present a resolution adopting an update to our debris management plan. One of the consequences of many natural and man-made disasters is the creation of massive amounts of debris that must be removed and ultimately disposed of safely in a landfill or other location. One of the most prominent examples of this was the 1.8 million tons of records left behind after the World Trade Center tower collapse, which took eight and a half months to remove. While Douglas County will hopefully never need to deal with a disaster of that magnitude, it is still important for us to have a plan in place to deal with disasters, both man-made and natural. The Douglas County Office of Emergency Management is responsible for planning and emergency preparedness, response and recovery, and mitigation activities within Douglas County. The overall document that governs this activity is the Emergency Operations Plan. The Debris Management Plan is a supplement to the Emergency Operations Plan and exists under Emergency Support Function 3B. This plan provides a framework for the clearing and removal of debris generated during a public emergency. The plan unifies public and private efforts to provide organizational structure, guidance, and standardized guidelines for the clearance, removal, and disposal of debris caused by a major debris-generating event. It establishes the most efficient and cost-effective method to remove disaster debris and dispose of that debris. It initiates and coordinates private sector debris removal and disposal contracts to maximize cleanup efficiencies when deemed appropriate by Douglas County officials. It expedites debris removal and disposal efforts that provide visible signs of recovery designed to mitigate the threat to the health, safety, and welfare of citizens. And it coordinates partnering relationships through communications and pre-planning with local, state, and federal agencies. This plan also establishes an overall priority for response consistent with the county's EOP. The priority follows the following order. First, we clear critical roads, facilities, and infrastructure. Then we open debris management sites for debris storage. We address legal, environmental, and health issues. We document damage and costs, and then we normalize operations for routine and long-term removal, recycle, and disposal activities. So the primary reason for the update was to align the debris management plan with the restructuring of Public Works, which previously the plan was under Public Works Operations with Rod Meredith. When Rod retired and Public Works was consolidated, we needed to just update the structure of the plan slightly to align it with the new overall Public Works Department. So I'll open it up to any questions, if there are any at this time.
Dan, thank you for that presentation. Any questions for Dan?
I have none.
Dan, that was a great presentation, and I think one of the reasons that people come to Douglas County is because it's safe, and certainly because it's clean. And Public Works has done a wonderful job for many years in terms of ensuring that debris is removed. Can you give me a sense of, you know, I know in page, what is it, 4BA of the packet, it talks about the amount of debris resulting from man-made disasters. How does your department deal with man-made debris?
So, you know, most man-made debris, we have to look at it for potential of hazardous waste. So, you know, example would be the recent fires up in Superior. You consider that a house has about 400,000 pounds of material in it. You have over 1,000 houses that were destroyed in that fire. So all that residual material has to be hauled off, and most of it has to be hauled off to a landfill. So it can't be used for, you know, just fill material out in a subdivision or something like that. So the whole procedure in the document outlines how we go in and we evaluate what the materials are, make sure that there aren't any hazardous materials, make sure that we can safely remove material in a structure or other, a situation where there could be risk of falling material, make sure that the workers are safe, and then we begin that removal operation. And the debris is separated and hauled off appropriately.
So just considering a hypothetical, we have, you know, in our county, 50% of our landmass is open space. What if a group of individuals decide to have a big party in our open space, and there's all kinds of debris in that area, and then they leave and abandon just a host of materials and trash and things of that nature? Does this particular resolution item contemplate that?
So a smaller event, you know, that's not really a large declared disaster, we can usually manage with existing resources, with our own staff. If, in the example that you had, we recently had some cleanups of abandoned homeless encampments. Because of the potential risk of hazardous materials, you know, there's paraphernalia, other things like that, we actually, on those sites, we brought in an outside company that we have under contract that has the training to deal with that situation. But smaller events, we look to our own internal resources. If we can handle that without major modifications to our own work program. So for instance, the recent storm, where we have a lot of branches down, doesn't rise to the level of needing to implement this debris management plan. It's something that staff can handle.
That's great. Well, I just want to thank you and your team. I know that in many communities across the country that were once considered beautiful, debris and trash vandalism can certainly lead to areas that are not so aesthetic. So you've done a wonderful job of keeping Douglas County clean. Keep it up. We really count on you. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Any further Commissioner comments on this item?
Let me just say, Dan, you've been in your new position for how long?
About four months.
You know, this was a big change and a reorganization, and I had the pleasure to be at the big picnic at Sandstone last week, and I wandered around and talked to many people. And they all told me how much they love their job, how much they love what's going on. So it seems like to me that you've already been successful, so thank you for what you're doing for us.
Thank you.
Further Commissioner comment?
You know, I'm sure there's somebody watching right now, or there's somebody who's going to, you know, review any kind of press coverage here and say, oh, sure, right after we have a big spring snowstorm and all the branches come down, then the county does an act of this matter. But the reality is, is actually, Dan, and correct me if I'm wrong, isn't this actually a critical piece that we have to have planned for here in the county in order to take part in any Stafford Act, emergency relief, as well as any kind of civil defense monies? I mean, this is kind of a critical piece of that disaster recovery plan that actually the federal government requires across the country. And it's good timing after a spring storm, and there's a whole lot of tree branches that came down. But this is actually another great example of the county staying ahead of the power curve, making sure that we are prepared to respond to the worst of circumstances that occur here in, should they happen here in Douglas County, so that we do the legal things required in order to get in line with FEMA, with the federal government, with state emergency management, in order to recover from any major acts. Dan's nodding his head, that means yes. Well done, Dan. Keep up the good work, please.
So I could comment, you know, Tim Johnson, Director of Office of Emergency Management, is not here to talk about this, but, you know, you're exactly spot-on. The United States has a nationwide system, national emergency management system, that helps us all integrate and work together in large events. That's been in place for over 20 years, and it includes every agency in the county, has a role in that, and it's designed in such a way that our plan fits into the state plan, fits into the federal plan, so we can all work together, and we all have what they call unified control and command and control. So that's how the system is designed, and that's what we do in Douglas County as well.
Yeah, I can remember several years ago, the county actually hosted a disaster recovery simulation, and we did it out at the, you know, the range training area off 85 over by Leveer's. And I was impressed that, actually, this is one of the first documents that was called up and given out, really as a checklist to the municipalities. And I was there with Jack Colley, representing Castle Rock at the time. And so, yeah, this is not only a part of the big paper shuffle, check the block, you know, make sure we have it for the feds, but then there are parts of this that actually become a part of our operational checklist in the event of a disaster. So extremely important to keep current, as was pointed out with the change of command between you and Rod. So, well done, keep up the good work, and, you know, make sure we keep current.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and with that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment either in the room or online. Troy, do we have anyone online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, is there anyone in the room that would like to comment? Okay, and with that, I will close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to approve a resolution adopting the Douglas County Debris Management Plan 2022 update.
Second.
There's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move to item five, other business. Is there any other business before us today? And then item six for the county manager. Anything from the county manager? Okay. And then finally, Commissioner comments. Item seven, are there any final Commissioner comments?
I would like to make a comment about an item that's reported in the county manager report. This talks about Colorado's newest judicial district is now one step closer to formality. Douglas County has been part of the 18th Judicial District with the Rappahoe, Elbert, and Lincoln Counties since it was created in the 1960s. There was a bill that was passed in 2020, it was House Bill 20-1026, that creates the first judicial district made since the 60s. It's JD 23. That will be anchored by Douglas County, joined also with Elbert and Lincoln, leaving a Rappahoe County as its own as JD 18. So the county has started meeting with a consultant and others to get this closer to being a seamless transition to citizens in January of 2025, when this becomes a reality. Thank you.
Any further Commissioner comment?
No comment.
And none from me. So the next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 14th, 2022, at 1:30 p.m. We'll adjourn today's business meeting and reconvene for our land use and public hearing at 2:30. Thank you very much.